All right, we can go ahead and get started. Good evening. The date is, Sharice just told me I had a minute left, I'm sorry. The date is October 27th, Monday, October 27th. The time is now seven o'clock. And welcome to the Urbana City Council meeting. We can now call this meeting to order. Clerk, will you please call the room?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Hersi?
Here.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop? Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
I am here.
Thank you.
While I'm present, we can proceed. Thank you, Clerk. The next item is the approval of the amendments, which there are none, so we will move on to additions to the agenda. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda? Awesome. All right, seeing none, we will proceed. The agenda stands as presented. Next, we will now proceed to presentations and public input. So first, I will actually pass it off to Councilmember Evans to launch this bad boy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, Melissa Courtwright, Executive Director, and Cedar King, Men's Program Director of See You at Home, are here tonight to give an overall update on their program, a two-year progress report on the Men's House on Springfield Avenue, and the status of the Madison Street Property Project. And finally, they will have exciting news about See You at Home's unhoused-to-hire-ed pipeline. And with that, Melissa and Cedar, you have the floor.
Oh, okay, look at that. All right, thank you so much. Obviously, this is an update that we wanted to provide to all of you, but also a huge thank you. We would not be in the House here in Urbana if it was not for you believing in the vision that we set forth, and you believing that everyone deserves an opportunity to make a life for themselves. And so I just want to say thank you for that, and obviously, just so much gratitude for your believing in our clients. So we are See You at Home, and we kind of have a little bit of an overview, just in case there is anybody who's not aware of who we are or what we're doing. So our goal is ending homelessness one person at a time. We believe that people come into our program, and every person that does matters and has a trajectory that they're on towards stability and success, and so that's very important to us. We want to be a part of a system. That's also very important to us. The reason that that is important is because we know that there's not one person, there's not one organization that can solve the complex problem of homelessness, and so it's very important to us that we're part of a system that is working together to solve that problem. And we exist to support and empower people. Those are two very important words for us. We offer support in a variety of ways to our clients, but what we're really doing is offering them support as they become empowered to make their own decisions, to create their own path in how that they move forward. So some of the things that our clients are facing, again, you are not unfamiliar with these challenges. They're facing economic hardship, unemployment, lack of affordable housing, lack of affordable health care. We serve many domestic violence victims. All of our clients have some level of mental health, addiction, or trauma, and they also suffer from being part of systemic issues that have led to their homelessness.
One of the things that we've observed is...
Can you make sure the mic's on? Push that button.
One of the things that we've observed is even though our clients come from a diverse background, they all have one thing in common, and that's an inadequate support system. And so one of the things that we really, part of our program, is we want to build recovery and social capital for them. And that's probably the first thing that we do.
So there's a lot of barriers to getting housed, and so once a person comes into our program, one of the things that we do, of course, is identify the specific barriers that that client is facing, but some barriers that our clients are facing, again, are kind of pretty universal among the people that we serve, and we kind of went over some of those: lack of transportation, lack of mental health and substance use treatment. A lot of our clients have entry-level skill sets, and so they're most able to apply for entry-level jobs or positions, which oftentimes leaves them in a very difficult situation because with entry-level pay, most of our clients cannot afford housing at fair market rent, so many of them have to rely on the voucher system, and sometimes that can be quite an arduous process for our clients to move through that system. So one of the things that's most exciting for us is that when we see people come into our program, oftentimes they're only able to think about 24-hour timeline, maybe 48, because they've been in survival for so long. But we have seen, and we'll talk about here in a minute, is our clients' ability to start doing long-term planning. They realize that those entry-level wages are not going to be enough, and that they're going to need to do some long-term planning, and so we see people going back to school and trying to gain skills, that sort of thing. So this is kind of our primary focus. We really do try to focus on the most vulnerable part of the homeless population, and so that's why, again, a lot of our clients have mental health, substance abuse, criminal history. We know that's not necessarily reflective of the entire homeless population, but we really are trying to serve a subset of that population that are some of the most vulnerable.
So in our men's program, the House on Springfield, seven of the eight members of that program have been, lived on the streets prior to coming into our program, and they've been victims of violence and predatory behavior by other people, so.
So we try to be solution-based. We feel like housing is one of the parts of our program. It's, again, one of the most important parts because without that piece of stability, the other areas that we want to work on really would not be possible, but we try to go well beyond just the need for housing to make sure that we're addressing the root causes of homelessness and being very solution-focused with our program. This is the eligibility for the program. I won't read all that. I feel like that's ticking by really, really fast, but... So updates on just what is happening at the Urbana House. So these are the areas that we focus on with our clients. As I said, the house that we provide is one piece of that, but we focus on physical health, mental health, recovery goals, income and education, life skills, spiritual and wellness issues, and housing. At that house specifically, in the last two years, we have had 25 men total that have lived in that house. The house holds eight people, and the program is 12 to 18 months long, so there's not constant, you know, turnover with the beds. We really do encourage our clients, again, because they are some of the most vulnerable, they're starting, you know, five or 10 steps back where a lot of people might be starting as they're trying to take steps forward, so we encourage them to stay as long as they need the program to find that stability. Fifteen gained employment during the program, four enrolled in college, three were drug court clients, and I did put that last one in there, six faced relapse, because I think sometimes there's a misperception that when somebody relapses that we remove them from the house. But that is six individuals that were still committed to their sobriety, that still wanted to take steps forward, that understand that they've taken a step back, but they want to figure it out. So that's six people that we have worked with through that process, and they are still on the path of becoming stable. Five of our clients have left, reunited with family. Five were integrated into the community. Three moved into one of our Phase Four houses, so those are houses that are not staffed 24/7, but that still do receive some case management services. Six left for noncompliance, and of those six, it was just, it was mutual on both sides. We realized that the program wasn't for that person. We did not have any issues. Nobody had to be removed from the house. There were no escalated incidents around that. And we did have one pass away. That individual came into the program already needing oxygen, unfortunately very unwell, and we knew that was a risk, but he did pass away in the hospital while in our program. These are our Parkland five, and I'll let you talk about that.
So this picture here, I noticed early this summer was, we had a number of our participants who were looking to go to Parkland in the fall, and one of the, and I started thinking about their backgrounds, all five of these people were living on the streets in, as recently as a year ago, and they are all now attending Parkland and all doing very well at Parkland as well, too. So the, the woman, Liz, she was talking the other night about how she was living behind a dumpster, and she decorated that area to make it look more comfortable for her. Another one of the gentlemen has just celebrated 18 months of sobriety. He told us he's never had 18 months of sobriety before. A couple of people have been, have done prison terms, and also some very severe mental health issues that these five have overcome to really do very well at Parkland. Four are in the automotive program, and one is in the social work program.
All right, so a quick update on our Madison Street property, which you are all also involved in, so thank you for that as well. Construction is coming along very well for that building. We hope that it will be completely done with the inside and reconstruction by the end of the year. That will allow us to house 26 individuals on site, which will be absolutely huge for us and huge for our community. And I won't read all that.
Can I get a motion to extend?
Yeah, to extend, five or 10 minutes? Or was that it? Need more time?
Well, I, yeah, we can wrap it up, or I can go back if you want me to. I mean, we could talk as long as you want us to. I'll be honest.
We did two hours at the Parkland.
We can talk as long as you want us to.
Let's relax, let's relax. No, thank you all, really, thank you, we appreciate you. Well, if you all are done, are there any questions? Grace?
Thanks so much for the presentation. It's great to hear the updates. Just wondering how we can continue to support, I guess realistically as a city, and even, I guess, outside of reality, what's, you know, kind of the ideally, the need for your clients and organization, or ways we can support further?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I appreciate that. Obviously, right now, we are, our main project is working on the Madison Street property. That's a huge project for us. We do have a capital gap there. The City of Urbana has already graciously provided some funds for that, but we do have a $350,000 gap, because unfortunately, when we got into our building, we learned that we were going to have to replace the entire HVAC system that we originally thought was going to be usable for a while longer. So we do, we do have that gap, but I think there's some other things that we're working on that hopefully we can also bring in the future. Workforce development is a huge component for us of what we're thinking about in terms of how do we give our clients skills, how do we give them practical tips, practical training. A lot of our clients lack a lot of confidence, even if they have some skills, they lack a lot of confidence, and so we'd like to work on some workforce development ideas. We already partner with Prosperity Garden. We talked about our Parkland students who are in the SWIFT program there, so we'd like to develop that out further. And then the other thing is permanent supportive housing. We are talking currently with a developer out of Mattoon that launched a permanent supportive housing site in Mattoon, but that's a huge need in our community and a huge need for our clients, so hopefully that's something we'll be able to talk more about in the future.
Thank you.
I do have a question. What was the timeline for the Madison project? I know we talked about it, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, our goal is to have the building reconstruction completely done by the end of the year. We'll start moving in beds and office, everything in January. We'll actually have some open houses in January. Hopefully, we would love for you all to come and be part of that. We'll probably do several of those, because once the residents move on to the property in February, that area will become kind of a confidential space, so we're going to walk as many people through that in January as we can.
So even with the additional HVAC work, is still year-end?
Yep, we're still moving forward, yep.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chris, for bringing that. All right, we will now open the floor for public input. Members of the public wishing to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, and keep your comments limited to five minutes. The floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Karen Medina, and I live in Champaign, but I work and do a lot of things in Urbana. I grew up in Champaign-Urbana and have spent a lot of my life here. So I'm here to talk about the promotion of Cervantes to Assistant Chief. In April of 2020, Aleah Lewis was beaten by Urbana police. Cervantes was there and didn't stop it. It is my personal opinion that people should not be beat up by the police. It is my personal opinion that women should not be threatened with a gun by their boyfriends. It is my personal belief that women should not be beaten by their boyfriends. Women should not be beaten by strangers, and women should not be beaten by the police. Nobody deserves to be beaten up. It is my opinion, no, it's, it's, the police never took responsibility for that beating, never apologized for it. It was caught on camera, that's the way we know about it, several cameras, multiple cameras, including the officer's own cameras. Because the police never took responsibility for it, they felt like they needed to lie to cover it up, or to say that it was perfectly normal. I don't think Urbana police should be beating people up, and it should not be normalized. Since nothing was admitted to, then nobody had training to do otherwise. Because Cervantes was involved, was there, did not stop it, and did not get training to do otherwise, it is my belief that it continues and that he should not be promoted. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephen McGuire. I am a resident of Urbana. I'm also speaking regarding the promotion of Cervantes. I saw the body cam video. City Council has repeatedly told us they want to have an alternative response model that favors de-escalation. This is not the way you show it. I have seen meth heads looking for a fight less than I did Cervantes in that video. He was looking for a fight. His officers shouted something to the extent of, "Keep your hands where they are or we'll shoot you." You, you say that you were for de-escalation. You say that you were for a demilitarized police force. There is no reason that this is the only person who can be promoted to that position, and if this is, that in itself is a problem. Moreover, it's, from what I know, he's a 22-year-old veteran. The Aleah Lewis incident took place, I believe, in 2020. That means he has had five years to unlearn the behaviors that very clearly caused a problem We need someone else, someone who, because let's, let's face it, whoever has this position is going to be, second only to Chief Boone, is going to be the one person in the Police Department who has most influence over the culture of policing in the Urbana PD. If it's Cervantes, then he potentially could teach other officers to act the way he did, to escalate the way he did, in that these two black women were not really a threat, you know? And if you choose to promote this man to Deputy Chief, then you should understand that when it comes to the alternative task force model, we want it absolutely as far away from the Police Department budget as possible, because we should not, we should not think that this alternative task force will respond in a manner that does not escalate these kinds of calls, if it is under the supervision of a department whose second-in-command is someone who very much escalates these kinds of calls. And I mean, this wasn't even a domestic violence, or I believe some man had shot himself or had a gun, and two black women were harassed. You will be losing our trust if you choose to promote this man. Please instead, look for someone else who could, who, who could take this position. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lila Leopold. I'm a resident of Urbana in Ward Four. It was great to hear updates about See You at Home, so thanks for, thanks for that and for supporting them. I'm also here because I wouldn't feel comfortable with Michael Cervantes as my new Deputy Police Chief because of his conduct during the April 10, 2020 arrest of Aleah Lewis. That alone is enough for me personally. I've seen the publicly available videos from the officers, body cameras, and bystander cellphone recordings, and it's, it's really bad. A Deputy Chief of Police is, as I understand it, a senior executive position, one that includes keeping a department operating in accordance with state and federal laws, and someone who's acted so forcefully toward a member of our community, and forcefully enough that I even read in news coverage from the time that he broke a finger in the process. So I think that, I mean, I don't even really feel safe standing up here and saying this, to be honest, but I really think you should find someone else for this position, or find skills that he does have and match them better to a different position, and that would be better for everybody. And while we continue to live through a time in which federal entities can come into our township and kidnap people and split up families and beat up anyone they choose, things only feel increasingly unsafe, making it all the more important to really carefully select who we put in positions of power that we can control. And while we continue to fund genocidal wars, whose ceasefires mean continued death and withholding of food and aid, such as the situation in Gaza, things just feel increasingly violent and unsafe, and when saying anything about any of this is being called anything but a call for a better future for everyone, I think it's just as important to take each step that we can in the choices that we're making in our community about who goes into these positions super, super carefully, because we don't know what's going to keep happening, but we do have the power to make some of these choices, so, thank you.
Hello, City Council. My name is Sarah Nixon. I am an Urbana taxpayer. Before I give my public input, I have a question. I hope you can answer it. Is there any reason why there are two police officers standing at the back of the chambers tonight, creating an, yes, creating an intimidating environment? Are we a threat? Is there something that we're not aware of that causes us to be a threat to the police? The audience, the public, is feeling intimidated, and that includes me. Nevertheless, I would like to give input on the question of promoting Michael Cervantes in the Urbana Police Department to a position of Deputy Police Chief. I find it incomprehensible that we, that this is even on the docket. So the people of Urbana need and deserve police personnel who exemplify excellence in law enforcement, and any member of the UPD who violates Urbana's values and standards of conduct, let alone anyone who has displayed a pattern of doing so, as, I think he's currently a lieutenant, so Lieutenant Cervantes has, is not someone we want as a public servant, much less an employee, to be brought forth for consideration, for promotion to the position of Chief of Police, or Deputy Chief. The notion that Cervantes could become Deputy Police Chief in Urbana defies comprehension. For the record, a prior speaker with whom I agree, the bulk of which of their input I fully agree with, described the incident on Good Friday in 2020 in Urbana as not domestic violence. In fact, I have spoken with the victim, interviewed her, and it very much was a case of domestic violence. And she was assaulted by, as I hope you all know, a number of Urbana's police officers because she failed to respond, in their view, appropriately to their commands that were screamed at her. And as people are saying, if we want a functional alternative response model of policing in Urbana, one that is not only racial bias informed, but trauma-informed and mental health informed, I can't think of a worse example of what not to do. There's so many reasons that an individual could fail to comply with orders screamed at them, which include mental health situation, could include inebriation, could include substance, a situation where substances might be involved, it could be the person is hard of hearing, it could be the person is in shock, the person is in a state of trauma. This is a young woman whose partner had shot a firearm in their apartment less than an hour before, and she's in the street, by her own admission, had taken some medicine for anxiety. She's in the street, being screamed at, and repeatedly clearly indicates to the officers that she just wants to go home. She's not, she's unarmed, she is disoriented, and because she is in the wrong place at the wrong time and has the, has a partner who is the person who was wanted, ends up assaulted, ends up falsely accused of assaulting the officer. I did FOIA the medical records of the officer who claimed to have had a broken thumb. You can look at my earlier public input on that. The injury sustained is known as boxer's fracture. It's a thumb fracture you get by punching. You cannot receive the fracture the officer did receive from being assaulted. You can't. It's, talk to ER doctors. It is known colloquially as the boxer's injury, boxer's thumb or something. So however that officer got injured was not from the young lady attacking him, and for her pains, she was put through years-long legal struggles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marina Manari, and I looked at all...
My name is Marina Manari, and I looked at all the cam shots, and I, they simply put me in a state of horror. Clearly, the woman regularly asks, "Where is a woman here? Where is a woman here?" And instead, she was held down by numerous men and violated repeatedly. She, it appeared as though she was worked up, also trying to protect her partner, because she was afraid of police. And the way the police handled it was in the worst way possible. And you want to put a chief of police who participated in this basic lynching of this woman, as the new chief of police, or the deputy chief, whatever, whoever was participant there, needs to stay away from these very delicate situations that need people who are responsive and sensitive to those who are involved. The whole documenting of this event was horrific, and it still is horrific. And you choose to pick one of these men to be your deputy chief of police. This is stuff that you learn culturally, and clearly, the culture of those people who are present is the pits for handling such delicate situations. She clearly was worried about her partner, even though he might have done something wrong previously. She thought he might get killed, and then she would be responsible for his death. The police do not have a good reputation vis-à-vis civilians who are unarmed usually. And they were treated like animals repeatedly on this footage. The grace should be on the part of the people who are armed to the teeth, not the people who are unarmed. I can't understand how this is even conceivable to put this man in such a very high-powered situation. We are looking for protection, not violence from the police. It's shameful that this has even been proposed. I do not feel safe in this community if he's in that position. Thank you.
Hi, Council. My name is Chris Selly. I'm a lifelong resident of Urbana-Champaign, and I'm here today because, we're trying to re-watch the footage. It was as traumatizing to watch as it was a few years ago, and I really had trouble getting through it, to try and pull out parts of the language and describe parts of the language, but the entire time, I'm just watching this woman get lynched. And, you know, I'm struck by how tone deaf it is, but then I'm struck that it's not deaf. The police know what tone they want. They want to reward this culture, they want to promote into leadership people who will encourage this, perpetuate this time-honored culture of policing. They know that we want change, and they're responding to it with more of the same. It's not tone deaf. It is a very pointed choice that the police department made, among a lot of them that they're making. And I think that we need to look at that as adversarial as it is. They are, they are standing against change. They want, in the highest levels of their leadership, to entrench this culture, to fight against a shifting culture that we're proposing through alternative policing. So as we move forward with alternative policing in mind, I think as much as it would be great to have an ally in, that there's some meaningful attempt at reform from the police themselves, they're not an ally in this pursuit. And I've known that, but I know a lot of people who struggle to kick them off the bus and say, "You're really not welcome in this conversation. You're not going to bring anything meritable to the table. You're not going to be constructive towards this conversation." If you need anything emblematic of that structural gap, it's promoting this man, this terrible, terrible person. You cannot, good cops don't exist. All cops are bastards, because good cops stop bad cops. And that is exactly what failed to happen here. You have not just a bad apple in a bunch of good apples. You have all bad apples, because they don't stop each other. The ones that do get kicked off the force, lose their pensions, get their lives threatened by their members of the force. The thin blue line is not there to protect good cops, it's there to protect bad cops. And so I just really, as a council, you need to step away from this department and their agenda here. You need to allow it to present themselves to the community as they are, but not pick up the tone problems yourself. And stand strong, defend this community, even if it's against their own police department. The language, the behavior used that night was incredibly dehumanizing and patronizing, sexist and racist, and this is the culture that we're fighting against, and it's not gone. I know you guys tried to add some use-of-force policy language that should have been there in the first place, but it didn't change the cultural problem, and you see that here today.
Hey there, Council. My name is Ben Jossen. I live here in town, have most of my life. I want to talk a little bit about public safety and what I've seen our police do in regard to public safety recently. At the recent No Kings protests, and folks who are still out there doing, doing the No Kings thing were threatened to be arrested, but the police have not come and stopped ICE, who've been coming in and stealing folks out of our neighborhood. Last year, the police showed up to the Urbana, or to the University of Illinois, sort of protest that was happening, opposition to genocide, and folks were arrested there, students were arrested there, community members were arrested there. Our police department showed up to assist, along with many other police departments. And after the fact, a couple of council members did a lovely job of saying, "That's not, the repression of free speech is not what we want our police force to be doing." Thank you for that. But that is, I want a police force that I can trust to not do that first and be told not to second, instead of a police department that is sort of told that they shouldn't be doing that kind of thing in the, in the future. But I want them in the moment to be trustworthy to act right as we go, and that is a fundamental principle of accountability. And again, we're talking a lot about Aliyah Lewis, and how, at that time, the way the police department was not in keeping with what is good, and not in keeping with what the city showed that they want from their police department. At the time, the police chief, who's not our current police chief, but our police chief at the time said, "This was all within policy." I have seen nothing to say that this is the way, like, that we've made sure that this will never happen again. And I think that fundamentally, if the police department, instead of saying, "Oh, we messed up, this is the training that we'll do, this is how we're proving that we'll never do something like this again," we would feel differently, but instead, it feels quite scandalous that someone who was involved with that incident is now being considered for promotion, because that is something we have very clearly said, that is not what we want our public safety to look like. And yet, our police department, that continues to ask for trust and say that it's earned our trust, is moving forward after these type of violations without anything to show that they've heard that and that they're working to be better. So I think that it's a mistake and a breach of trust to move forward with hiring this individual into a greater role of leadership without proof that huge amounts of work have been done to show that they won't be acting in that kind of violent way ever again. Thank you very much.
All right, is there any additional public input at the time, at this time? I'm sorry. All right, thank you all for who spoke. We will now move on to council input and communication. Are there any members of council who'd like to speak? Go ahead, Mary Alice.
Thank you. I'd first like to address one of the questions that the public had about the police being in the back. Oftentimes, we will see both the police department and the fire department, when there is a promotion, or if there is something on the docket, we'll see them in the back of the room. To the best of my knowledge, they were not asked to be here or concerned about the audience, so I wanted to address that. The second thing that I wanted to state was my deepest condolences to Giovanna, and I can't pronounce her last name. Benedetto, thank you, family for her recent passing. She was an activist in our community who really strove to help those who live in southeast Urbana, and her loss will be deeply felt throughout the community. And finally, I would, I would like to draw attention, and I'm sure if you are affiliated with the University of Illinois, you got a lot of alerts on Friday. Our police, I'm sorry, our fire department actively worked two fires on Friday afternoon. I'd like to thank them for their quick action and their address of those fires as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
All right, Chris?
Thank you. Just a quick announcement, there was mention made in public input about alternative response. The first alternative response task force meeting is Thursday, November 6, at 3:30 at the Independent Media Center, Thursday, November 6, and the public is invited. You won't be able to give public input at that meeting. You can email public input, but at this time, but during the live task force meetings, they will be spending an hour and a half doing the work of the task force, but you are invited to watch. Thank you.
James?
Thank you. I want to echo Mary Alice's recognition of Giovanna and her passing, and I, and I hope her family is taken, taken care of in this, in this time. Giovanna was a leader in building community in southeast Urbana. She was one of many people that helped make the Silver Hearts group come together and the Silverwood name come into being. It was because she had a focus on building community, about bringing people together and seeing each other and helping, helping to lift that area up. And I, I do think we should recognize that and remember her well.
Grace?
Thank you. I suppose I'd say thanks for the input and people coming out tonight for the discussion. Also, yeah, speculating on officers in the back, and if anyone else wants to clarify my, you know, assumption that they're here to listen and join and be part of the discussion, which I also definitely understand that being intimidating, especially standing in the back and with full gear and weapons, and so I totally understand that, and I'm open to hearing more. Personally, I would enjoy, invite them to sit down and join the discussion. Personally, I feel like it's less intimidating, probably for the audience, even up here, if, you know, they would just sit down and be part of the community. I think that's an important piece, and I think that's what a lot of us are saying, is that we want them to be part of the community. So my recommendation would be that they're, they're welcome, and they need to be a part of the discussion, but sit down and be a part of the community rather than in the back, which can feel intimidating. And happy to hear other thoughts on that. Also, hope that people enjoyed Pride Celebration last weekend. I was, already had plans out of town and didn't expect it to be in October this year, but I hope that people enjoyed who were able to make it. And also, definitely acknowledging and hoping to have continued discussions, some on and off the record here about how to protect our community from terrorism, from federal agents and ICE in the community. And then also, another piece on the surveillance ordinance still in discussion. We can get something more official, but I would hope that maybe we could have another discussion in two weeks, November 10, at council. Maybe we have a lighter council meeting, and we could get back on that. And I would plan to have some updates to share, and don't know if others too, looking at city attorney and some other things that we had talked about the last time, about kind of updates and homework. So if people want to do some review on their own and come with some thoughts, I would plan to propose that we have another discussion on November 10. Thanks.
Anyone else? I don't know who was first. Sharice?
I just want to join with James and Mary Alice also in saying that I really want to send my condolences to Giovanna's family. She was definitely a force to be reckoned with regarding her community outreach and how she managed to bring together so many different folks to, and bring them together as a community. So they have my deepest condolences, and I hope that her little girls will be well taken care of. The other thing that I wanted to say is that I understand with some of the public input, your frustration. I can understand that, but I do take, I do take issue with the use of the word lynched. And I take issue with that word, because as an African American, that was not what was going on. That was, it was not a lynching. It was a bad situation, yes, but far from being a lynching. And if you've read any history about lynching in America, you would know better than to use such an incendiary term regarding that particular situation. There's a lot of speculation out there about what you think happened and what actually happened, and what, there's so many rumors and misinformation that happened during that time, that I think some, some folks are still upset because of that misinformation. I, I would hope that you would think that in the five years that, since that happened, that people can be retrained, okay, and reformed? Because if you don't think that, then, then there's nothing that anybody can do to make you think that that's even happened. So I just wish that when you, you know, when you regard other people, and I'm not just talking about Lieutenant Cervantes, I'm talking about in general, you have to know that, that situations happen, and that, don't think that, they don't know that that could have been the worst day of their lives as well.
All right. Jay?
Yeah, I'd also like to express my condolences for the loss of a very active member of our community. But I, I think this process of public input and council communication can get challenging. We've had people ask us in the past, "Why don't you respond? Why don't you answer questions? We're not allowed to." It's not how the process works. But I would like to lift up what council member Hersi just said. Revisiting a violent arrest in our community is painful to the members of this council as well. And I, I will say, I think probably especially for folks of color, and I, you know, even in this process of Sharice expressing the pain that came with the flippant use of that term, and I'm not saying that anyone is being disrespectful in terms of what happened. This has been a very difficult process of review, but if we're going to actually be lifting up folks of color, I find it very disrespectful when she's expressing, that is not a term that should be used for anything but our history and how it has been used and continues to happen. We'll get to the appointment piece of this. I know that there are strong feelings, and I understand that. I think it's important for people to educate themselves and for us to have a thoughtful and meaningful conversation about the direction our police department needs to go. But I do think it's also important to hear, when there are members of our community who are people of color, including the people up here, saying that something is harmful, not to be dismissive of that fact. Sometimes it's a matter of making the best choices that we can with the information that we have that sometimes community members do not. And while I can respect that there are going to be frustrations, I mean, I remember being outside protesting during COVID during this incident as well, but I do think that it's important that we listen when people are saying that there's a way to have these conversations that is productive. a way to have these conversations that is productive and there's a way that diminishes significant violence in this country if we're not thoughtful about the words that we choose.
Is there anyone else? If no one else, I'll speak. You know, echoing some of what has already been said, you know, I am of the mindset, you know, that public safety must both protect both the safety and dignity of folks. We can't and we won't trade one for the other, you know, like everyone here, you know, especially as a minority. I'm tired of corrupt policing and systemic harm, right? Especially when I am, again, outside of my suit and tie, I am a broken tail light away from being hashtagging on a T-shirt myself. So I want to make that very clear as I continue this statement. Under my leadership, I think that I have shown over the last six months especially, accountability is non-negotiable, right? It's non-negotiable under my leadership, but at the same time, so is the possibility of growth, especially if it's real and measurable. I don't expect everybody to agree, and frankly, I don't want everybody to agree with me, if I'm being completely honest, but that's the way in which I lead. Second chances, they're not blank checks, right? They're contracts with benchmarks, timelines, expectations, and public reporting, right? And, you know, all those things will be required as long as I sit in this seat as your mayor. At the end of the day, I'm here to lead for the next three and a half years, and I'm going to lead with integrity and the utmost respect for everybody in the community, not just a select few. So thank you again. If there's no additional input comments, we will move on. Next is the reports of standing committees, which, are there any? I don't think there is. There's none. So we will move on. We will now move to committee of the whole. Chair Hersi, you have the floor.
Bringing forward the consent agenda, and we also have some issues on the regular agenda. And we'll start with the consent agenda for approval. Before I begin, would anyone like to separate anything from the consent agenda? Okay. Number one, A, Resolution Number 2025-10-080R, Resolution authorizing staff to implement certain provisions of the Secure 2.0 Act to the City of Urbana Deferred Compensation Plan with Mission Square Retirement. B, Resolution Number 2025-10-082R, A Resolution for Improvement Under the Illinois Highway Code, State Motor Fuel Tax for Windsor Road from Philo to High Cross. C, Resolution Number 2025-10-083R, A Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a license agreement with Icon Hospitality LLC, two signs adjacent to Hotel Royer. Resolution Number 2025-10-084R, A Resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency, IACA, grant for Urbana Arts and Culture Operating Support FY26, 2026, sorry, Urbana Arts and Culture Program. Next, E, Resolution Number 2025-10-086R, A Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community partnership agreement, Experience CU fiscal year 2025 to 2026. And F, Resolution Number 2025-10-087R, A Resolution authorizing the acceptance of an Economic Mobility Leadership Institute grant from the African American Mayors Association. I bring this to council for approval. All in favor?
Nope.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second, but I think Deshaun gets to do the piece.
Okay, he's supposed to say that. Go ahead.
I have to make the motion right now.
You go ahead.
Don't get me confused. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Sure, just to clarify, Sharice motioned. Mary Alice seconded.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on our regular agenda, we have Resolution Number 2025-10-081R, A Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a revised intergovernmental agreement for geographic information systems services. Is there any discussion? Do I have, I gotta have the motion, don't I? Oh, I move for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jaya, sorry.
Motion made by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. Discussion? Mary Alice?
Hi, thank you. So we received some additional information last week about this specific agreement. One thing that was said at the end of that information was that this agreement is for the consulting services with CCGIS. It's not necessarily to approve storage and the cost of a new GIS system. I'm disappointed in that response. I'm specifically disappointed because I would have liked to have had at least an update in terms of what we were doing with technology. One of the comments in the email said that, oh, this will be charged back to other departments. That's still a cost to our city. I'm not saying it's the wrong decision, but I would have liked to have that conversation so that we could have a better understanding of the different options on the table. I have nothing against CCGIS. I think they're an excellent organization, but because we really were not given the opportunity to have any say in this, I am going to vote against this.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that passes.
Okay, the next. The next resolution on the regular agenda is Resolution Number 2025-10-085R, A Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement, Champaign County Economic Development Corporation, fiscal year 2025, 2026. And I move for that to be approved.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any discussion? Grace?
Thank you. I just want to say thanks for the follow-up information since last week about how that amount is set each year. Please step in if I'm wrong, but that it's set by the city, not necessarily based on a population or percentage from the organization, which makes sense, but also doesn't make sense why we've been told that that was the case in years past. We've been told specifically that this was based off of population or some percentage, which I just don't appreciate being told something if it's not the case, whether someone knew it at the time or not. Either it's misinformation or it's just blatantly fabricating and lying to council. So I appreciate the follow-up information and hope we can keep it straight going forward.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes. Thank you, Chair Hersi. I appreciate you and welcome back.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any reports of special committees? None? Are there any reports of officers at this time? None, all right. We will now move on to mayoral appointments. We have one staff appointment and two board and commission appointments. The first is the position for interim deputy chief of police appointee Michael Cervantes with the term ending April 27, 2026, or six months, whichever is the latter of the two, which would obviously be April 27, 2026. May I have, I'm just going to, the motion, right? May I have a motion to approve this appointment?
I'll move to approve.
Motion made by Sharice?
Second.
Seconded by James. Is there any discussion?
I feel like...
I'm sorry, who? You don't have to. Do you want to? Yeah.
Yes.
I'm sitting here. Yeah, go for it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, you don't have to, but go for it.
Yeah, I'm sitting here, might as well. I recognize the emotions involved in the Aliyah Lewis situation. Obviously, I was not here during that time. I have seen such incidents in other places, and I recognize the emotion that comes with it. My mic is on, okay. Having said that, one of the things I don't embrace is calling all my officers bastards. That's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that no one will speak to that, which is why I'm sitting here to speak to that. They do a very, very difficult job on very limited resources every day. And we're making traction within the community with all people. I know there'll be some that we cannot satisfy, but we're going to continue to try to satisfy On behalf of the mayor and myself, I want to recommend for the appointment Lieutenant Mike Cervantes to the interim role of deputy chief. Mike's a leader I deeply respect. You have to recognize over my career, I promoted easily over 100 people to various positions in police departments. I recognize talent and character when I see it. Mike's foundation was built in the U.S. Navy, serving during Operation Iraqi Freedom and Enduring Freedom. That experience shaped his discipline, resilience, and sense of duty. Since joining Urbana PD in 2006, he's done it all. K-9, patrol, street crimes, investigations. And in every role, he's earned the trust by listening, supporting his team, and doing what's right. A couple of weeks ago, he did what I could not do since I've been here. I saw a blind spot with respect to large-scale events that may touch upon the county. One of the things I was trying to do is get everybody in the room so everybody knew what to do in the event of a crisis. Lieutenant Mike Cervantes, Lieutenant Select Cortez Gardner, a member of the Sheriff Department as well as our fire department, they did a phenomenal job allocating resources, directing the incident plan when it went askew, when the folks did not follow the plan they agreed upon. They didn't get aggressive, they went with the flow, even when the folks got into the streets to protest. They were able to calibrate that as well without incident, and at the end of the day, that's what you're looking for. You want to afford folks the opportunity to express their First Amendment, and you want to do it to such a degree as unfettered. Everybody wins. There was no incident, they got to be heard, everybody went home safely.
Can I say point of order and make sure if we're talking about the appointment directly?
We are. Mike Cervantes directed that incident. No kings were mentioned regarding him right there, so I figured that was my opportunity to address it here.
Sure, just want to be sure that we're on the point and not addressing public input.
We're good. Please continue.
Okay, so Mike has earned a master's degree, graduating from Northwestern Staff and Command. That shows commitment, not just to the job but to the mission. He's steady, he's humble, and he leads with his heart. And at the end of the day, most of us can do policing, the nuts and bolts, as I like to call it, of policing. But at the end of the day, you want a force that leads through the Constitution as well as their heart. And the majority of my officers do that every day, which is why I take offense to calling them bastards. So promoting him in the interim deputy chief isn't just about his past service, it's investing in our department and in our future. I got a host of talented individuals that's been selected for a promotion, and we're just going to become a better police department because we have great people here, despite of what folks say. I know you all know, and I know you read, and you're contacted by constituents that say the very same. I yield.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion made by Sharice, seconded by James. If there's no further discussion, clerk, sorry. My apologies.
Sorry, sorry, we haven't had any discussion.
All right, Grace, go for it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Make it quick. I will be a no for this one, just giving briefly my reasons. I have concerns with the individual's behavior, first of all, and then second of all, also have concerns with the position itself. A little context that this was a position that I was not in support of adding in the first place in the budget a few years ago. This is a new position that has never been permanently filled. We had a brief interim, but in the history of Urbana, we've had one deputy, and I think we can continue that way for now. We have a very tight budget, we have other projects we're working on, like the alternative response and enhanced training. So I don't think that we need to be expanding leadership, especially in light of some of our feedback from officers of more need for supporting patrol officers and less top-heavy administrative leadership in the department. So I don't agree with the position in and of itself also, and I do think that we need to support our officers to do what they're trained to do, the best that they can and as safely as possible for them and for our community. And I think that, again, that can be through streamlining, through more training, and through other resources to help people so they can do the scope of their work. And I still don't think that this is the time to be expanding the department and leadership. Thank you.
Anyone else? Chris?
Thank you. On June 8th, 2023, at approximately 12:20 PM, Urbana Police Lieutenant Michael Cervantes distributed a press release about a carjacking off the parking lot from the Crispin Auto dealership in Urbana that occurred the previous day by four young people. In the press release, Lieutenant Cervantes provided a superfluous and irrelevant detail that a license plate reader in Savoy was somehow pertinent to the apprehension of the four suspects the following morning in Shinoa, Illinois. The misleading suggestion in the press release that a license plate reader in Savoy aided in arresting the four suspects was completely false. A Freedom of Information Act request to the Shinoa Police Department confirmed license plate readers had nothing to do with the arrest of the four suspects. Testimony by a Shinoa police officer at a July 11th, 2024 sentencing hearing of one of the defendants corroborated that license plate readers had no part in assisting officers discovering the whereabouts of the suspects driving a stolen car. The information from the Savoy license plate reader indicated the suspects were fleeing eastbound, when in fact, the suspects were later found far north. It would have been more accurate to report that despite the stolen car detected to be passing two license plate readers, one on campus and another in Savoy, the suspects easily escaped up to Peoria and east to Shinoa anyway. In fact, just one hour and 38 minutes after the release of the misleading press release, Lieutenant Cervantes himself admitted by email, license plate readers did not aid in arresting the suspects after he himself contacted the Shinoa Police Department. Nonetheless, Lieutenant Cervantes did not correct the erroneous press release and instead allowed news gazette reporters Deborah Pressy, Mary Schenk, and Luke Taylor to publish articles containing a subtle false impression that a license plate reader in Savoy helped the police arrest the carjackers of the... arrest the carjackers of the Crispin Auto Dealership. Dishonesty and deceiving the media and thereby the public has no place in police work. Officers practicing falsehood undermines the public trust and the reliability of the entire system. The city of Urbana must take a zero-tolerance stand against falsified police reports, dishonest police investigations, and perjured testimony by police officers. Trustworthy and accurate criminal prosecutions depend on police officers telling the truth and nothing but the truth. Therefore, in order to protect the good reputation of our fine rank-and-file Urbana police officers and to ensure this police department abides by facts and truth only, this promotion cannot be supported. Thanks for letting me speak.
Is there any other discussion? Jaya?
Yeah, thank you. When this possible appointment came before us, I made it very clear to the mayor and to our chief of police that we needed answers for what happened with the Aliyah Lewis arrest. We've had significant time to review both the publicly available as well as additional video to understand the context of what was happening in that moment, and I've done my very best to make sure that I'm being objective and looking at one individual, not every single person who was part of that incident. This, as I mentioned previously, has been a very difficult, emotionally exhausting, and challenging process, but I do think that it is the right thing to do to analyze based on what, what was actually happening in that moment and in individuals' actions, not the actions of other individuals as well. So I want to acknowledge the pain that this is bringing up. That is something that I mentioned again to the mayor and to the chief. I think that it's very clear this community has never had a chance to heal from that incident, and I think Chief Boone, if you don't mind me mentioning this, I think asked a very reasonable question of, of why are we having this conversation now? And my honest answer is, we were never given an opportunity to do so previously. So, I want to acknowledge the pain this is bringing back up, but I also want to make sure that our community knows that this council and the mayor have had the opportunity to look at this in depth, and as we move forward, at least for myself, any decision that is made is based off of the facts of that case and the actions of Lieutenant Cervantes specifically, not anyone else who was involved. And the decision I will be making tonight would be different if we were talking about a different individual. I think I've made it very clear that there is behavior that I will not tolerate. I think I've made it very clear that I'm an enthusiastic supporter of the efforts that we are making to make our police department the best that it possibly can and to explore alternate opportunities for how we move forward with public safety. To Grace's point, this is not a position that I supported creating, but when we are asked to look at an appointment, I look at it objectively, based on the facts of what I can see with my own eyes. But I do want to make sure that we are also acknowledging that this is not an easy moment for our community, and there still needs to be a process to make sure that we have a, a space to heal from what happened those years ago.
All right, thank you, everyone who spoke. Is there, James?
Yeah, I, I want to echo the idea that this is something that has been looked at very carefully. It's been, it's been revisited. I, I share some of the chief's concern that while we try to work through what we're going to do in the future with public safety, there are some individuals who are not going to be satisfied with the outcomes that we have, and I'm totally unaccepting of anyone who wants to paint the Urbana Police Department with one brush. I've worked with many of the police officers in Urbana, in the Urbana Police Force and find them to be good individuals with a sense of duty and an interest in serving the public, and it is not acceptable to label them all in one way. It may not be acceptable to label anyone in one way, but I haven't met them all. We have a, we have a good police force, we have good leadership, and both in the city and in the police force, and I intend to support this nomination.
All right, Mary Alice? No? No one? All right, I'm sorry. Sharice?
Ever since I got appointed, when I first got appointed to, to city council, one of my first conversations was with then-Chief Bryant Seraphin. And Chief Boone also knows how plainly I may speak about regarding police issues when there are issues. I go to the head. I don't, I don't think about, think about it twice about what I'm going to say, and I'm often, you know, looking for answers. And I do actually have that kind of relationship with all of the police officers that I have encountered, including Lieutenant Cervantes. I've had conversations with him. What I would challenge, and I agree with what Jaya has said, I was on city council when all this went down, and so, yeah, I've seen those tapes a lot. And one of the council members at the time actually pondered why more of the black community didn't come out and, and say something about what had happened to this young lady. And my question was basically the same. And part of that, when I talk to people in my constituency, was it was a situation that didn't have to happen, on either side, on either side. And so, I don't have an issue with Lieutenant Cervantes because I've interacted with Lieutenant Cervantes since this has happened. I don't have an issue with Lieutenant Cervantes because of the fact that I've had just basic conversation on how people are treated, one way or the other. And I feel that if, if, if there was a day that you really didn't want to have to deal with, that would have been the day, of course, for him. That you don't, that you would like to just put out of your memory, that's a day that you might want to just say, you know, it's unfortunate that any of that kind of happened. But it was on, it wasn't one-sided. It was how we interact with each other as human beings, period. And we, as, from my perspective, and what I'll say is this, our police officers are people too. And I know we all have, God, I know the history of the police force within this country and how it was formed and how it continued for several decades, we can even say centuries, okay? I know that, that history. But I also can see when someone is and has worked to not carry on that history. And so, what I would like to see is our community, the healing is still, once again, both sides. It's not just one side. In the past few years, especially since Chief Boone has been here, there's, he's, they've worked really hard to gain trust, and they have worked really hard to show you that they're not, they, they are here to keep you safe, but at the same time, situations call for difference, for different types of actions. And for Lieutenant Cervantes, I think that he has grown as a person. Obviously, he's grown as a police officer, or he would not be lieutenant. And having had conversation with him, I feel that he would be confident this is an interim position, which means that we can see in six months where his leadership takes us. And if we don't like that leadership, it can easily also be taken away. We don't have to vote him in again, we don't have to appoint him again. But I do think that everybody deserves another chance than what would be considered the worst day of their lives as well.
All right. Thank you, council, for everyone who, who spoke. At this time, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
No.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes. Congratulations to Deputy Chief Cervantes. Thank you, Chief Boone. All right, our next Board and Commissions appointments. Can we do these two together? All right. So the first we have is Community Development Commission, Rachel Harp, with a term ending June 30, 2028, as well as for the Civilian Police Review Board, Jane McClintock, with a term ending June 30, 2028. May I have a motion to approve these appointments?
Move the two appointments.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Grace, seconded by James. Is there any discussion? Grace?
Just once again, say thank you to the individuals and their willingness to serve on the boards and commissions for the city, and feel free to reach out with council on how we can collaborate as well. Thanks.
I will say yes. Also, congratulations, or not yet, but thank you for applying. You know, I've had a couple of, you know, very productive conversations with, with at least one of the two individuals, you know, that I'm encouraged and look forward to, you know, to work alongside the, the both of them, but, you know, definitely excited and appreciative of you all applying and jumping out here. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and that passes. Congratulations to both of you and look forward to serving alongside of you all. All right, with no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, have a safe night.